Okay, we'd like all to order the Town and Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission, July 28th, 2025 meeting. Ms. Bergami, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Here.
Mr. Villan Calhoun.
Here.
Ms. Bolovski.
Here.
Ms. Gomes.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
Chairman Darpino.
Here. Next up is the approval of July 14th, 2025, meeting minutes. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Bolovski. Second?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Gold. Any comments or corrections? I had one minor one on line 168. I believe the project lead should be changed from Chairman Darpino to Ms. Gold for 1748 Union Street Broadview Credit Union. All in favor of that amendment, just state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And a motion to approve the amended July 14th, 2025 meeting minutes. I will move.
Second.
And second by Ms. Bolovski, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, July 14th, 2025 meeting minutes are approved. Next up is public hearings. We do not have any public hearings, so we'll move directly to privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor is open for any town resident wishing to speak on any planning or zoning matter. Please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. Okay, it doesn't look like anyone here is present for privilege of the floor. Laura, did we have any correspondence with the town?
Nope, I didn't receive anything for this month.
And is there anyone online?
Nope, just an applicant.
Okay, excellent. Last chance for privilege of the floor. Seeing as none, we will close privilege of the floor. There is no unfinished business, so we move on to new business. First up is Resolution 2025-20, a resolution for site plan approval to reconfigure the visitor parking lot of the new GE Vernova DAC building at 2690 Balltown Road. Project lead is Ms. Bolovski. Now therefore be it resolved that this planning board hereby determines that the amendment does not affect the original secret determination for the project, which remains negative declaration, and be it further resolved that this planning board and zoning commission finds that the site plan amendment referenced above meets the requirement of the zoning code and previous site plan approvals, and therefore hereby approves this amendment, subject to any conditions imposed by the original approvals in Resolution 2024-35 and 2025-13, with the following condition. One, the final landscaping plans for the site plan amendment shall be reviewed and approved by the tree council. Ms. Bolovski, may I get a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second? I'll second it. Open for discussion.
So just to recap, we discussed this at the last meeting. The redesigned visitor parking lot and entry is designed to connect the outdoor areas of the recently completed projects on the site to provide more of a campus feel. The previously approved entry is reconfigured into a series of walking paths with native grassy areas and includes a significant addition of new landscaping. The removal of the parking circle in front of the building increases pedestrian connectivity via sidewalks and walking paths. There's a new emergency vehicle lane in front of the DAC building and significantly enhanced landscaping, which we mentioned, much located in the large square sections of tall grasses and flowers. And that the presentation that was previously provided has been shared with both the fire chief and the updated SWIP, resulting in an increase in the size of the retention ponds. Mr. Savoy, you wanted to step up? Is there anything else that we need to know?
No, I think that was a good recap.
Yep.
Could you just state your name and record?
Yep, Matt Savoy with GE Vernova. I support the facility scene.
Thank you.
So we adopted the motion, correct? I'm just going to make the recommendation of an additional amendment. This is kind of just a standard thing that we would put at this point, and that's that any questions or concerns raised by the town designated engineer will be addressed by the applicant in a formal letter to the town.
Not initially.
Excellent. So can we vote on that amendment?
Okay, so there's a motion to add condition number two, which Ms. Bolovski just read. I will second that. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Further discussion by anyone from the board? Well, to recap, we think that GE Vernova has been doing quite a bit of work over the past couple of years enhancing the campus. You've been quite a regular here at the job, at the meetings. So we really like the direction of everything that's headed, and hopefully all of this gets executed in the near future.
Awesome. Well, thank you all. I know this is a lot. It's a big undertaking for the town. Appreciate everybody involved in the time, and we're looking forward to continue to be good partners with the town. So thank you.
Okay, all right. If there's no further discussion, Ms. Bergami, could you please call the roll on the amended resolution?
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Villan Calhoun.
Aye.
Ms. Bolovski.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Khan, Mr. Duke.
Sorry, aye.
Ms. Bolovski.
Aye.
Ms. Gomes.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Darpino.
Aye, resolution passes. Thank you.
Next up is Resolution 2025-21, a resolution for site plan approval for a tenant change to Bloomingdale and Spa at 437 Balltown Road. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds the above referenced site plan meets the requirements of the zoning code and previous site plan approvals, and therefore hereby approves the site plan as described in the above resolution with the following conditions. Number one, code compliance signage for the property shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Any waivers or variations of code on proposed signage shall require a full planning board review at a future date. Number two, the health of the adjacent existing landscaping shall be reviewed by the tree council and property owner together, and any dead or dying vegetation will be replanted. Make it a motion.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Khan.
Second.
And second by Ms. Gomes. We have a representative from the applicant here? State your name, please. Okay. Did you get a chance to take a look at the resolution and understand what's with the packet? So the signage, the signage that's currently in the package is at 28.5 square feet, and the permissible allowable sign is 26 square feet for both facades.
Oh, so it's like over.
It's just slightly over.
Oversized.
Right.
To be at 26.
At 26 would bring you into a code compliant sign.
It's 36 to 26, right? Right now, say 36. You want it to be like 26?
Not that small.
Not that small.
Just a very small reduction in size will get you, will get you to the code compliant signage. If you, if you feel strongly that you really want this size of a sign, you can do a separate application, which would come back to this board, and we would review that to see if we wanted to grant a waiver.
So like, so like slightly down would be like around 36 to like 30, I don't know, like.
So we're actually looking at the area. So the current area of the sign is.
Oh, yeah.
It's the area.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Okay. So the current area is like 114 times 36.
So the current area is 114 times 36, which makes it almost 28 square feet.
Right.
It needs to be 26 square feet. So you, so you would probably take that square and just shrink it down proportionally so you get to 26.
Are you working with the sign company or?
Yeah.
Okay, because in, in, in past practice, the sign company actually can come to this meeting and.
We can do that.
Right. Okay. All right, but for this resolution, the signage is not included. Okay?
Unless it's 26 square feet, and then it's okay.
Right, yep. Okay. So you will have to come back one more time for the signage, even after today's resolution. And it might be good to have the sign, the person who's actually going to make the sign be there.
Unless.
Unless, unless it's 26. 26 square feet.
Come here again.
We're going to have a discussion and then vote tonight on the resolution. It's up to you if you decide you want to have a larger sign, which is part of the package, or if you're going to bring it down to the 26 square feet, you'll work directly with the building department.
Okay, okay, okay. I'm going to bot it out, yeah.
Okay, right, right, okay. All right, so I think otherwise, it's pretty straightforward. It's a tenant change. No exterior enhancements. We do encourage every applicant, if there's the ability to enhance landscaping or other items around that, work with the, work with the tenant on that and the landlord. Parking is always something that we review. There's ample parking in this section of the plaza, and I think very little upgrades to the outside. I think the recap's everything.
I think the tree council did identify that there's a couple of trees that should be replaced. So.
Okay.
And the applicant knows which ones. We've communicated that.
So we would usually work through that with the building permit. That's why the tree council condition's in there.
All right, there's no further discussion. Ms. Bergami, could you please call the roll?
Aye.
Sorry. Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Ms. Bolovski.
Aye.
Ms. Gomes.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Darpino.
Aye.
And Andrew, I mean Alex, boy.
Aye.
All right, the resolution passes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, welcome to Niskiuna. All right, next up, Resolution 2025-22, resolution for approval of a lot line adjustment at 2600 Rosendale Road and parcel 51 dot dash 1 dash 53 dot 11, the Lyshakil Nature Preserve. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby grant final lot line adjustment for 2600 Rosendale Road and parcel 51 dot dash 1 dash 53 dot 11, the Lyshakil Nature Preserve as shown on the aforementioned one-page survey drawing with the following conditions. One, prior to recording the plat, the final lot line adjustment map and recording documents, including any associated deeds and easements, shall be sent to the planning department for their review with the approval by the town attorney. Any changes, additions, or deletions requested shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the planning department before printing the MyLars. Ms. Gold, may I get a motion?
Yes, I so move.
Okay, you have a second?
A second.
A second by Ms. Bolovski. Okay. Like a quick recap, we took a look at this project. It is quite generous that it's being gifted over to the nature preserve. I believe one of the takeaways from the last meeting was just to make sure that the nature conservancy was a warm recipient of this and definitely wanted it, so we've confirmed that.
Yeah, so actually, it was just confusing with the named applications, but they were included in the original submission package.
Okay.
We just didn't understand that Matthew Levy is the signer for the nature conservancy. So they submitted a complete application.
Okay.
Um, I didn't realize that until I called the nature conservancy and talked to them for a while about how great this was. And then they were going to send me a new page, and they said, yeah, well, we have to get Matthew Levy to sign it. And I was like, oh, wait. So yeah, they signed it to begin with.
Okay, great.
And they're happy to do whatever is needed to get it to. And actually, I sent the letter to the, to the surveyor, and they've already addressed the comments in the letter as well.
All right, good.
And I'll just note, this is a Phil Frye. I've forgotten her married him. Taylor's wishes is expressed in her will. This property was her family farm, and she never wanted all that land developed. So this is a beautiful solution.
Yep, keeps the single family home, and the rest goes to the poor.
All right. Okay, there's no further discussion. Ms. Bergami, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Villan Calhoun.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Ms. Bolovski.
Aye.
Ms. Gomes.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Darpino.
Aye, resolution passes. Okay, that's it for resolutions, so we'll move on to discussion items. First up is 2331 Troy Schenectady Road, a site plan application for a new monument sign. I believe Mr. Khan was the project lead for this.
Okay.
So I'll just preface this. Mr. Khan is going to be taking over as the lead on this one, and also part of the recap of this will be some of the information that transpired at the ZBA meeting that Ms. Robertson will fill in the board on.
Please. Laura, if you can fill us in on.
Okay, yeah, sure. So the zoning board looked at this on their last meeting. They had quite a bit of public comment on it. A lot of the public comment was actually related to a site plan review at the planning board. So the zoning, what the zoning board typically does is they take all of that public comment, and then they let them know that they'll send it to the planning board. They did grant the variance for the sign, but they granted it with the condition that the sign turns off at 10:00 PM. And they did want the planning board to take a look at, I'd say the main, one of the main concerns that they heard that they had no control, site control over, is that there was lighting that was added to the back of the building or landscaping that was removed. I'm not 100% sure which was. But something has made the back of the building much brighter to the adjacent neighborhood, and they felt the light trespass was interfering with their ability to quietly enjoy their homes. So the owner is here, and he can talk about that, and the sign company is online.
Okay, so just to summarize, and then thanks for the update. So this originally was a tenant change, and then it came for us for a change in sign. We made a recommendation, the sign required a variance, an area variance. We made a recommendation to the ZBA on that. You know, I think I remember how we all voted on that. I don't think it was a unanimous vote for the sign was concerned. So there's a, I'm trying to understand, what's the legal process that brings it back to the planning board?
Um, it's, it's always a site plan review.
Okay.
For the sign. So the planning board does its recommendation and goes to the zoning board, and then has to come back for resolution. So the next step on this is for you guys to call for a resolution, but you can certainly explore the lighting on the back.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I, I think based on how, and please, you can come on up, yeah. Please come up and state your name and, you know, affiliation, then we can get.
Sure, I'm Tyler Turpinning. I'm the president of the Heritage Group, 371 Vli road, Schenectady.
Right, so, so as Laura summarized, based on the sequence of events and then coming back before the planning board for a site plan review as we normally would. And now additional information has been raised from the public comment concerning lighting. I think we'll need to look at, you know, the entire site plan. So is there paperwork that's been submitted for that, the drawings and?
I think so.
No, all's I, all's I did was replace the two existing residential, how do you call them, carriage lights that were already on the building that were inoperable. So I just replaced my new ones with normal candelabra residential light bulbs, and I put landscape lighting on the bottom right-hand side of the property and on the front of the building, just regular landscape lighting. There is zero anything in the back, nothing. So the neighbor behind me requested that the side, the lower section going into the building, just to have it turn off at a certain time. But there's no exterior rear landscape lighting at all. There's nothing even there.
There's no lighting in the rear of the building?
Zero. It's just the right side. So if you face the building or go down on Anandaga, it's right on the left bottom.
Yeah.
There's two landscape lights shining up strictly for security and safety of my staff. That's why I put it in.
Does that side door use?
It will be, yeah.
Is there interior lighting that somehow might be seeping over?
Maybe the front landscape lights go through the front picture windows, but it's my office in the rear, so I don't think so. I mean, the house is behind. I mean, I've been there at nine o'clock at night. It doesn't seem like it, but I'm here to help her in any way to not disrupt anything. I actually talked to my electrician, and when the building was wired initially, everything is on the same circuit as the sign, like every light on the outside of the property. So we can make them all go off at 10 o'clock. I mean, just flip the timer to 10, and literally every light will go off at that property to help her and, you know, help the neighborhood. If that's, you know, appeases her, that's fine. I just, because my staff won't be there probably past eight. So I mean, it's not going to be a real safety issue at that point.
Yeah, so, so the main thing in my mind relative to the board is how detailed a site plan review are we going to do?
Um, it's up to you. The comments from the public did definitely. I mean, it was a combination of this property's lights being brighter, and then of course Harry's lights being brighter. But they did feel like just whatever was done recently, they could even read in their bedroom without a light on. That's how bright they said that it was, the adjacent home. I don't know, because I don't actually drive by there a whole lot. But I do think that the zoning board was trying to mitigate that with the 10:00 PM sign lighting. And I do think that, you know, the planning board in sort of concert with that, to have the rest of the lighting turn off required at 10 is probably a good balance.
So Laura, you're saying from our purview over this at this point with site plan that you feel that that's sufficient of a study for us to just assure that the applicant turns off lights at 10:00 PM?
I mean.
Or, because actually, you know, honestly, you, you know, you've told us, and we obviously acknowledge 100% what it is you're saying, but there is a complaint that was raised. We, we haven't seen any drawings, right? So I don't even know what the lights have where they are.
To be honest, I didn't know I needed the drawings.
Yeah.
Just like normal landscape lighting on a one-story building.
Right.
And I did talk to the electrician today, and he said, the lights I bought, being robbed, really good industrial commercial landscape lighting, he said they could be turned down to the lowest wattage of 20. He thinks that they're just on, like, the, the factory setting, right?
Yeah.
When his guys installed them. It can go down to 3,000 kelvins, which I guess is like a very warm.
It's a warmth, yeah.
Very warm light, and the lumens will go down to 2,600, which would be 150 watt incandescent light bulb. But the whole reason I put them in was because the property's pitch black. I run an insurance company.
Yeah.
And I'm just, I have a security system.
What are your hours of operation again?
Well, in the summertime, we're open 7:30 to 4:00, but we insure a lot of companies. So sometimes meetings come in at 5:00, 6:00, 7:00 o'clock, whenever the executives can meet. I mean, we're usually out of there by 6:00.
Right, but that's, that carries over into the wintertime too, right?
Yes, correct.
Yep.
Yeah. We're open five days a week.
Yeah, I feel like your precedence, like turning the lights down for those color temperatures and everything would be good.
And there's nothing, and if you drive down Anandaga, there's nothing in the rear. It's just the exit ramp. I mean, I mean, it's the staircase that was there when I bought the building. Nothing's been done. It was just the, the lower two lights that illuminate the side of the property.
And I did miss that part of the ZBA. I watched a portion of it, but I missed that part of the ZBA when this topic was on. But the, the person who raised the issue said lighting in the back of the building, right? That would be on the, on, you know, on the northern facing side of the building.
Yeah, you were at that meeting, weren't you, Elena? I, I feel like they said the back.
I was. I, I do think she said the back, but it might, I mean, I didn't, I can't speak for her. I don't know. Just appears.
I think from her bedroom window, it seems like the back, because it's the side, right? And I understand, I mean, you know, whatever we got to do to help her out, you know, but it's not the, it's definitely not the rear of the property.
He also made it very clear that it wasn't just this property that was causing.
Right. Yeah, we, we look at it one property at a time, right?
I understand, for perspective purposes, when you're.
So do you think we could get like a, a site plan that shows where the landscaping lights were added and what you can turn them down to in writing by the next meeting?
I, I could, I mean, why just get that from the electrician to install them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think so, I think.
I, I'll speak on behalf of the board, and the board can tell me if I said something right. We would like to go with the simplest pathway forward to be definitive on the record of what the lighting situation is on the property.
Sure.
Right, in terms of both where those lights are located, what kind of lights they are, what are some of the characteristics you mentioned verbally? And so if we can get that, right, as part of the site plan review, you know, that drawing submitted, and at the next meeting, at least, we can look at it and be very decisive about, well, yeah, this is the kind of lighting we're talking about. This is the location. It's not here, not there. It's actually here, right? Wherever those hears and there's are.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? I, I think it's, it's, you know, for us to be objective as a board, it's worthwhile to actually be able to look at a drawing.
Sure, and I, and I just think too, I mean, the building's been vacant for two years, right? And I did it really for raw protection of my staff and my company. It wasn't to offend the public. I grew up on Mohegan Road. It's, it's a very well-presentable property. And it wasn't to, what I, what the term that was used to me was light pollution.
Yeah.
Their landscape lighting. It's nothing, but if I have staff leaving at 7:00 o'clock at night and I don't have parking lights.
I, I think all of the arguments you made are very valid arguments. And, you know, my comments, I think the comments of the board was now strictly just around, you know, what will the board be looking at when we go to final site plan approval?
Sure.
Right, so that we can make a very affirmative decision about that, knowing specifically what those details are that you communicated verbally.
Sure, and let me ask you this too. I mean, I have another location, and, you know, I need to move half my organization in 30 days. Does landscape lighting hold that process up?
No.
Yeah.
Nope, you're all set. That's just.
Ultimately concerned. Yeah, I have to make some real business decisions in 30 days. That's why I purchased the property. I still want to make sure that that wouldn't hold up my staff.
Yeah, no, right? I mean, the.
No, because.
The tenant change part of this is.
Is done.
Yeah, the tenant change part is done.
Sure, we'll get you, that's fine.
That's right, and, and I don't think we've ever had a situation here before where a lighting plan has ever held up anything, right? I, at least in my tenure here. We, again, you know, the logic of how we got here, the sequence is, right? We've gone through that. Let's at least look at something so it's there on the record. And, and identifying it, but like you said, the reasons and argument you mentioned, both in the summertime and the wintertime. It's a place of business, right? I'll say that when we're looking at this again, I'll, you know, we'll have to discuss if 10:00 PM makes sense, right? You know, if he's got a late day or something else that's there, then, right? Safety and security of employees and clients, et cetera, matters. So maybe there's.
2:00 PM, your, or 2:00 AM, your house will be nice and dark.
Right, but I mean, we can come to something that makes sense.
Yeah.
Right, and so is that reasonable?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you very much. And so you'll work with Laura to get that, you know, just to review. And I, and I think, let's be specific, specific. The planning board is asking for nothing more than just what the lighting layout is.
And what the settings are.
And the settings are from, right? We don't need to look at anything else, right? Rest of the board members? Okay, yeah, so this is strictly on the lighting part, right? And whatever comes along with it. Thank you. All right, Chairman Walsh, Chairman Darpino.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. It's tough, it's tough following Tom Brady.
Hopefully he's watching and knows how fond we are.
Let's check.
All right, next up is 4240 Council Road, Mison Kitchen, a site plan application for a tenant change requiring a use variance. Ms. Strang is the project lead. She is not here tonight, but Ms. Robertson is going to give a quick recap of the ZBA meeting.
Yeah, so the ZBA reviewed the application. A use variance criteria is very specific, and they wanted, in writing, some more financials, which Ms. Kafaga is working on. And in the interim, at her own kind of risk, she understands that she would still like to work with planning board on the site plan details, so she's developing signage. She would need the signage wherever she moves to, she feels that this is still, it's still a good use of her time. And so she'd like to come back on the August 11th meeting and work on some more site plan details with you all, which I said would be okay. And like I said, the use variance is in progress. The application for the zoning board is in progress. So they did defer to the next meeting to get more information before they take action.
So Laura, I was not able to watch that portion of the ZBA meeting. Can you just provide kind of an overview of their concern or what, what facilitated the request for additional information?
So I don't, I don't know that they necessarily had a concern with the application. It was just they needed data in order, use variance is a very specific criteria. You look like you went to add something.
I can, like, just.
Yeah, yeah.
So the two types, well, there's three types of cases that a ZBA can consider for purposes of this conversation, area variances and use variances. With the area variances, it's a balancing test. With the use variances, there's specific criteria, and you have to meet each and everyone. They didn't really get into each and everyone, but it seemed as though the big concern was the ability to show that she would not be able to realize a reasonable rate of return by putting a single family home on that property. She is a realtor. She gave. Um, she is a realtor. She gave some comps, but beyond that, she didn't have like concrete numbers other than just um, I think some research that she had done. So they were looking for her to gather some more concrete numbers and information. One of the discussions, I think, was remediation that may be required by D E C if the ground had to be dug up by putting a single family home. So they were looking for some documentation relative to that, as to whether or not that should be uh expense that should be considered in that um best equation. So just things of that nature. They did bring up an appraisal. I don't know that that she needs to go to that level. But they just, I mean, it's their decision to make as to what is competent financial evidence and whether or not that would put them under or a use variance could be granted.
And the digging up issue goes to, there were gas tanks there?
I believe so, but I'm not a hundred percent.
And do we know if there's asbestos in the building?
That's not within the, well, I I mean, I shouldn't say it's not within the purview. It could be within the purview, but that wasn't something that was raised.
Well, asbestos removal is very expensive.
It is.
And encapsulating it is far less expensive.
Yeah. My, my only comment to the planning board is that use variances are very difficult and I think it would have been, looking back, a little more helpful to flush out our recommendation to the zoning board a little more as a lesson learned for next time. It was a pretty thin recommendation for a use variance. And I think the zoning board has been through a lot with um lawsuits and code interpretation and use variance interpretations lately. So they're really trying to go by the numbers. So I also think it'd be okay if the planning board in the future, you know, really went robust with all of its ideas and reasons.
I always wonder how far we should go without butting into their territory.
Yeah. Um, even if it's really just exploring the comprehensive plan and a, you know, kind of changing of the use and what the impact is on the neighborhood, because you're really the experts on that, right? So they look to you guys for that. So I just think, um, you know, I I will give you better guidance because that one went through pretty quickly, but I think we could do a more flushed out version in the future.
Okay. Personally, I thought it was pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I guess that to me, it's an apple, and I was on the zoning board, so I appreciate what you're saying in terms of needing to make that call. I guess, yeah, I, to me, bringing in the single family home piece, when you're really, it's to me an apples to apples change.
It's a legal requirement, though. It's legal. Yeah, I mean, they they have to look at that and they have to treat all use variance applications the same. Um, so it, you know, it can be frustrating when it may be logical that we think that that is a good use and it's less intense and it's very in harmony with the neighborhood. Um, but you still have to kind of legally go through those hurdles to prove that. Okay.
We, we, we was in the effort to thicken the conversation of the argument. Um, in no way can we look at the definition of retail service versus restaurant like to me, they don't seem that different in use, but they are, right? So is there room for thickening the argument to to say that this is a lot like a retail service shop?
Yeah, I think in the future, something like that in the recommendation is helpful, that you've looked at the uses that, you know, they're, you know, the parking requirements are the same. That type of, like, just really getting into the details of what, you know, planning board site plan details, just so they have some context on the planning side of the comprehensive plan, the use, the change in use, that kind of thing.
I mean, some retail service shops are running and run out, but Stewart's is a place that people sit and dine, like it.
They got into the discussion a little bit and then kind of got back to the use variance. I think where they said it was different is that there's actual baking and whatnot going on. Uh, because they had told her if she was just going to go out there and not bake there. You know, it'd be a different conversation, but since there's gonna be a commercial kitchen with baking.
And just to confirm, if it were just, if they were not baking, it wouldn't be a use variance.
Would be continued.
Yeah, I mean, if it was kind of packaged deal, like, you know, then it would sort of be considered retail. Stewart's is a Stewart's is a hybrid little thing, though, because Stewart's bakes its own pizzas and things, so it's a Yeah, they do. Yeah, it's Stewart's is a, Stewart's is an unusual combination of services.
So should we look at owner operation specifically, and maybe argued that they're not retail service?
I don't think we have to look backward. I just think that I notice when we're at the planning board that I think the next time because use variances are so specific and so legal that even if it seems very obvious to us, I think we should take the time to um just really detail where our brains are at.
For what it's worth, that's where my brain was at. I thought about Stewart's, not a retail convenience. I thought about how Stewart's operates.
Yeah.
How people tend to consume their products, how they make and create deli food cook, like, it would be very similar in my mind to this new, this use.
And I think it's okay to put all of that detail in.
To interject, just so you understand, though, like, you guys can say all of that and that's great, but there's legal criteria. So take, let's let's take the factor about the ability to realize a reasonable rate of return out. There's also, it cannot be a self-created hardship. In my opinion, she's able to overcome that because the contract that she's under to purchase is contingent on her getting all of these approvals. That's not always the case. Sometimes people buy the property without that, and then it would be dead in the water regardless of whatever this board's opinion is. So that's you know, I hear what Laura's saying. I don't disagree with what Laura's saying. It's all helpful information, but there's still certain legal criteria. And based on what the case law is, they're bound by that regardless of whether or not we like, it could be the best project in the world, but there could be a legal criteria that just can't be met.
But hardship can't be.
And then that was my question, where the Stewart's line stops and her line starts. Right? Well, just what the responsibility is, is the person who is, she has not purchased it, correct?
That's what Elena's saying. That's, that's the way it has to be. Otherwise, you're precluded from a use variance.
Okay. So on future applications, maybe under suitability of use, we break down that zoning section?
Yeah, I think that would be a really good idea.
That almost like its own standalone fourth section or third section before the recommendation.
I want to caution on it. Can't really weigh in on those legal criteria because that's solely within the jurisdiction of the zoning board. So just want to make sure there's a separation.
Yeah, but we don't, because what the planning board recommends on is suitability of use and conference.
I I understand. I'm just kind of wrong here reiterating that. Just don't want to see that happen.
Get back to my dilemma.
Right.
So to clarify, I I would say that we would recognize the current zoning and what is being proposed to go in there as part of our summary and take it to that level. Okay.
And I also think like identifying what, because we're, because we're essentially the ones that classified the use. So, you know, what to Chris's brain, what he had in his mind was, here's, here's a retail, pre-existing retail store. Here's what it's going to, like, what are the differences kind of thing by site plan?
And the big difference is the kitchen area, but it's not a full kitchen.
No, but the other, yes. And the other thing that came up, um, which um Ms. Kafaga might talk to you guys about is the county referral had a plan that chose curbing, actually, and on uh Council Road that picks up two more parking spots. So, um, maybe in the future, but it is an interesting concept to look at and um I just wanted to keep you up to date and
Picks up as an ads?
Yeah, yeah, you can add two more spaces.
That is interesting.
Yeah.
Sure.
Maybe it's bank parking in the future or however we want to do it, but you can definitely, um. Yeah, the county actually figured out the design a long time ago, like ten years ago.
Okay, and then just quickly, sorry, just clarify for me. So our decision to continue moving forward with site plan review while awaiting the next zoning board means we're just gonna continue to have this discussion?
Yeah, because she's coming forward at her own risk. If the use variance is denied, there's
We're, we're.
Right. But um if the use variance is approved, she can still, you know, work with you guys. It gives her just a little bit better timeline to help her along. Because of the doubles Z B A meeting.
All right. Okay, moving on to thirty four oh six Albany Street, a site plan application requiring a special use permit for the operation of a religious education facility at a single family home. No project lead, so.
Yes, I knew. The last time one I came, uh, both meetings asked about the ownership of this area and I already sent the all the document to Mr. Henry. And uh, and also my engineering's company is Dan already sent the this car parking lot and everything, so all the documents. So I'm just waiting for both decision. And anything.
Yeah, so um, we haven't had a chance to review the parking lot plan yet, but um Mr. Hess was able to review the um ownership and he has stated that um, he's reviewed the town code and it's clear that the ownership is not an issue. The definition of use in section two twenty dash four relates to the specific purpose for which land or a building is designed, arranged or intended or for which it is or may be occupied or maintained. So he has reviewed the legal requirements. It is okay to proceed with ownership as is.
Okay.
And then um we'll review the parking plan and have it in the packet for you guys by the next meeting.
I have huge reservations on the parking.
Um, there was a question, um, at the meeting, I think last time, you had stated three to five families and the application stated three to fifteen. We thought that was a typo, but I don't think it actually is. So I think it would be important for you guys to clarify how many.
Yes, as I already mentioned, so only the something like annual festival or something like that, this wizard day. There will be round about fifteen family member because uh in this uh even the capital regions are not that much family of our program there. So only the annual wizard is once a year or something like that. There will be fifteen family member. Actually, so every Sunday, what we keep doing just for summer is maximum around about four to five family member.
Fifteen families or fifteen family members?
Fifteen family. It is just for annually, so just we said, it is round about April. Uh, we used to do once a year or something like that. Uh, only that times around about fifteen family member. Fifteen families. Usually this summer, we have only three to five Sunday, only Sunday. And also it is just lunchtime.
Which, which equates to about what, like twenty to twenty-five people?
Yes, something like that.
So like four to five cars and twenty to twenty-five people.
Okay, so the, the proposed site plan would not have any modifications to it, correct?
No, no more.
As is the back area, which looks like it's relatively open. There's some paved areas and then is that in the like a slab of an old, an old building? Laura, if you could pull up the site plan.
Yeah.
Okay. So coming off of Albany Street, there's a, there's a driveway that brings you in. It looks like it comes right up. I drove by this weekend just to try to get oriented. So there's a driveway tucked up close to the house, correct?
Yeah.
And then what's in the back area? There's a rec, rec, a little bit further down, that, that right there. Is that a paved area? Is it a hard surface? Okay. Like a pavilion type tent? Okay.
The whole inside the fence. Weekend use.
Okay. So the, the one thing that Dan will need to take a look at is the floor area ratio of the hard surface that's going to be proposed, because if you're taking over quite a bit of the property or paving, um, we'd have to take a look at that. There's some drainage issues that would come up. Uh, a curb cut coming into another street is also something else that would have to be reviewed by the board. There's quite a bit of, quite a bit of additional information on an updated site plan that we're gonna need to see.
So from engineering.
From engineering.
Some documents.
Mm-hmm.
If we can get that right in like that.
Yeah, we can. Um, I just, I, it must have come in past the deadline, the parking plan. I haven't seen it yet. Um, so Clark and I will analyze it and then let you know what more we need. Yeah, we were working on the deed stuff, which you did provide very quickly and we are okay on that end.
Okay.
Um, just to be clear, this is gonna remain a single family home? This is gonna be a special use within it?
Yeah, it's, it would essentially be a special use permit to allow a religious facility.
And it doesn't need a use variance for the second use?
I don't think so.
I mean, that's a permitted special use, right?
Yeah, and the town board, the town board can, and when they're issuing special use permits, combine uses into you can have two uses in a special use permit.
Okay, I want to be clear on that.
Yeah, well, it's very clear. It's actually um one of the points that we've been making in the code interpretation case that's before the zoning board. We're very clear that the zone, the town, there's a whole section in the code that town board can combine uses into a special use permit.
I mean, it's actually similar for upstate guns and ammo across the street, right?
Yes, it is. Yes, the special use permit is granted for the, well, originally.
Laura, can you, can you say one more time, because I'm still processing it, what the, the research that um Mr. Hess cleared away with ownership?
So he was concerned that the, the part, the property would have to be owned by the religious facility in order for a special use permit to be granted. But what he found was in the code, it's not that specific. It's just based on a use, so it doesn't require the owner be the religious facility. That's what he was checking into. So it's okay that it's owned by a single person rather than like an entity.
Okay.
And there's nothing that requires a leader to be endorsed by some ecclesiastic body or whatever.
And he says that's specific to our code. He didn't have to go any farther than our code because our code defines use so broadly.
Yeah. If, if it is possible, maybe for the next meeting, it would be good if actually we can get a reference. Because I think that's beyond this application. I think that's got a lot of actual implication, right?
The, um, he wrote in a memo. I can send it to you guys.
Yeah, yeah, just for. Yeah, but we have a situation where it's a
Private.
Private owner that, so there's a private owner and then there's an application by an organization. The, the, I'm, I'm just asking questions about a more general case of where yours is a specific. So there's an application by an organization for a special use permit, but that organization does not have any ownership rights in the property to which they're asking for the special use permit.
Um, well, I think that um the owner is affiliated with the or religious organization.
Yeah, but, 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 but is that a necessary requirement in Mr. Hess's research?
I don't think so, actually.
Right, yeah. It sounded like it wasn't.
Yeah, I don't, it sounded like.
I mean, that's why I said it the way I said it.
Yeah, he focused in on the.
So we can have a homeowner, sorry, a building owner, property owner. And another party comes and does an application for a special use permit of any sort, for his special use.
Allowed in there.
That's allowed in that zone without having any affiliation with the owner.
Yeah, I think that is what he's saying. Yeah.
Just have had situations where we get, where a daycare facility gets a special use permit for going into a church and they're not affiliated with the church, but they're a separate
Right.
Owner. I think it's the same.
But don't we ask the question if there's something contractual? Right? There's got to be some kind of an agreement. So, so no affiliation, but there's gotta be some. So so no affiliation, but there's got to be some contractual
Well, I think that.
Record.
Church, they buy, right, because it's business. I think the concern is that, right, private.
Yep.
And then an entity comes in to use the home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, there's gotta be. I'm being very specific about the word affiliation, so I can understand that there's no affiliation. But there's got to be some kind of an agreement in place.
Oh, yeah, I would think so. Yeah. But to your question, actually, we do not require daycares to show us the agreement that they have with the church. We've never requested those. It's just been essentially the owner has to sign an application, right? So the owner is saying, yep, I'm allowing this use on my property if granted. And that's as far as we go between the owner and whoever is asking for the, you know, the.
Okay, so the owner provides a.
The owner always signs the application.
Yeah.
Yeah, or or sometimes they just send an email, but.
And there's usually an agreement between the owner and the less see.
Yeah.
That if the owner needs for their purposes, it can be terminated within like a thirty-day period.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that happens.
We see that for tenant changes too, but we actually never see the lease agreement tenant.
Okay, so so on this one, I think really what's going under normal and your fifteen-family max situations will be adequately captured here and what's the role of upstate guns and ammo?
Yeah, they were going to be the overflow parking, I guess, for the event.
Riding to.
Yeah.
The riding.
It's the riding, okay. Fence event, okay.
And the overall issue I still have is the parking access. And then if that parking becomes unavailable, what happens?
So far, technically, we have no issue. Previous events like that, so what I already mentioned, like we said, the event fifteen family member. This parking lot is this can a more provide us and is more than enough, even this, the whole parking lot is not filled.
Mm hmm.
Okay. And also, we already know this parking lot Sunday and Monday, we can use it and all our plan is scheduled only for either Sunday or Monday. So mostly we have Sunday because our folk cannot do Monday because they all are working. So only Sunday, we have all this plan happen.
But what happens if ownership of that property changes? That that's got to be the concern.
Yeah, we planned another one is another coffee shop next to this MO and we planning and we talked with this coffee shop because coffee shop is they close around about three P M. And also we planning like the coffee ticket in case we need to use this parking lot or coffee stool. And they also said, okay, that's totally fine. This is alternative. We use it, but we never use it coffee shop. This is alternative. We use it as a token in case there will be another over flow. So far, our folks are technically speaking, this capital regions like this area with this, we have round about four or five area and then, you know, our folk go separately in different area and stay no places back round about fifteen car at the same time. Because we are folk are very small, tiny, tiny populations in the capital.
But your goal is still to pursue additional parking on the home property.
No, in case we need it, because the town boats are acts in case if we can provide we have extra space in the in the compounds to park. So we prove we have it in case because not to make the any traffic or any issue with the neighboring area and then not to make traffic to this Albany Street. So we have the plan as town boats are to present this. So far, we have no issue. We made this happen. And then so all the neighbor when we communicate that they all have there's a no complaint from the neighbor because we have teeny tiny and then our event is never noisy. It is a quiet meditation.
So what would be helpful is when Dan, your engineer, does these drawings, if he takes the lots where the bank parking would be and then show the agreed parking at upstate guns and ammo in that area. I think that would be helpful for us to understand where the parking is located, where the overflow parking is. And if there's any proposed modifications to the property that you own of what you plan on doing.
July twenty.
It's July twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we haven't had time to review it yet. It just came in.
Okay, all right. Okay, maybe that's already already been developed and that'll be helpful for us to see. Okay, great. Okay, um, this one would be great for a project lead, so we will have someone assigned and then the planning department will reach out to you.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
And just a reminder for the special use permit, you guys do have to have to call for.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, next up, oh, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, I was jumping the gun.
Okay. All right, next up is Seneca Road subdivision amendment, seven Seneca Road, a subdivision amendment retaining regarding drainage. Sal. Give us a quick recap of what's been going on at the property.
Um, Mike DuSault, Land and Water Ventures. Um, so this is a three-lot residential subdivision. Actually, we had three lots. Uh, we have lot one, lot two, and lot three. And then there was two areas there. They did it to the town, one for a trail from the town park to Seneca Court. And then a larger lot over here with majority of the wetlands on site. Lot one remains undeveloped. Lot two has been developed and occupied. And then lot three is Ryan Lucy's lot, the developer for this project. So Beck and actually his house is under construction now, so he's doing site work and wrapping that up now. So this is why we're back in front of you to ask for a change to the site plan for his lot. Back in early June, we had moved the bio retention area that used to be right in front of the house here. We moved to the side yard closer to the wetland. That was a immaterial change. It was it's performing the same functions. No changes to drainage. Water quality and all those remained the same, was just literally a move, a shift around the corner of the house. And we also realigned the driveway to mimic more what was put in the field when the house was constructed. So, um, so we're in front of you today to ask for a extension of the culvert in under lot three, Ryan's house. Right now, we have it shown as fifty-foot culvert. We're talking, we're asking to extend it to a hundred and forty-two feet, so we'll go from this side of the driveway to just in front of the wetland here. And one of the reasons we're asking for that or when Ryan's asking for that is to avoid taking drainage from the park and dumping it in his front yard and having it wet potentially during different times of the year and to push that that water closer to the wetland edge. We kept the slope of the pipe the same, the discharge rates the same. We modeled the longer pipe length in the overall model for the River Road culverts and the Seneca Road colors and there's no changes into the hundred and fifty-eight acre drainage area coming down to River Road on the wetland that's up off the page here. So we're hoping that we can get approval for this is be more a direct connection from the runoff coming from the park across Ryan's lot and then discharging before it enters into the town-owned parcel here. One of the questions when we met with engineering and planning was the culvert would be submerged because there's a water, the water, as everybody knows, there's a there's a problem with the low spot here. That elevation is about two eighty-eight for the standing water. The outlet of the culvert would be two ninety, so that'll be two feet above that, so it shouldn't be submerged at any time during normal rainfall.
Culvert outlet at the bottom or to center line?
Uh, bottom in.
Bottom.
Okay.
Yep.
At the at the outlet.
So you're saying that it's higher and it should never be, it won't be submerged?
It won't be submerged. So we all, we all, the one thing we did too, this is the culvert is on Ryan's property, so you see the right away is out here, so the culvert is is well onto his property. So we added a little short swale along the edge of the roadway here to collect anything coming from the roadway and directing that also to the wetland. So.
That swale was, there was a swale there originally, right, before this culvert extension?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Why was the bio retention? Why did you move it? Is it just to get more usable space in that?
More of aesthetic change.
Okay. And.
But that was, that was all, um, that was all granted or administratively approved.
Right, administrative approved, uh, planning department and town, modern sewer, right, Laura?
Um, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Right.
But yeah, um. It was originally at front here.
Okay. Yeah.
So is the movement of the retention pond directly impacting the need for the longer, longer culvert? In other words.
No, 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 it's not.
Can I ask the question differently? Why was it the culvert longer to begin with? Was it because of the retention?
Well, I think when we were doing planning for the site, it was completely wooded. I think as as Ryan has developed it, he's noticed these things that would make it a better home for himself. So that's why we're here. We moved the bio retention around the corner to be give him a better aesthetically looking front yard, making the culvert a little bit longer since he's seen water come through that. Once they've started building and started doing the grading and notice that maybe this will be a better solution long term for his his family and the use of the property.
So to confirm, it's it was shorter originally because there was growth that was in place.
I think we were, it was shorter just to go under the, it was at.
Set a fit underneath it.
Under the driveway.
The driveway.
Under the driveway. It was just a driveway culvert and and now instead of having a swell through the front yard, it would extend the the pipe another ninety feet.
So so our procedure here, and I'm sorry I'm speaking up, but I think Laura, we had talked, Chairman, you know, since I was the one of the co-leads before, I think I can, I'm okay taking this one again as a lead. So this is a site plan modification.
A subdivision amendment.
Subdivision.
Yeah. Yeah, um, the engineering department, you know, would typically always recommend an open swale. It just stores more water and you can see what's happening there. And, you know, so I think another reason it was probably engineered that way to begin with is it's kind of an intermittent stream that goes through there and normally you just do a driveway crossing for your culvert. So I mean, um.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, which I think is what the answer was originally that you know, there was a swale there and the culvert was just under the driveway. And, you know, and I and I could see, I mean, I'm not going to put words in the applicant's mouth, but the proposed amendment makes that whole area usable.
Right, yes.
Ground usable, which is something of merit, right? I mean, but I guess the one key thing is the maintenance of the culvert.
Yeah. They're working with the engineering department. The engineering department is very iffy on this one, but they wouldn't. It's enough and it needs to be a publicly discussed change. I would have to come back to you guys too. So they're looking for a path forward with the engineering department concurrently with reviewing the changes at the planning board.
And I have a question. Doesn't that property already have seasonal wetness?
Well, if there is wetlands, the wetland edge is right here. So that what what's passing through here is runoff from the town park into Ryan's property.
But it's been doing it for many years.
Correct. So what we're talking about is.
I don't know what wetland preservation guidelines would say on approving this, but I have a concern there.
There's a, there's a, we have a nationwide permit for permission from the Army Corps of Engineers to disrupt the wetlands. That's that's all been vetted.
That's the red area, actually.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm still iffy on it.
Can we go? Can we go back to that drawing, Laura?
Yeah, that. You can see it a little better here. It's this red area.
Yeah.
It just appears when I zoom in. There now.
Yeah, that's that's all been approved for disturbance by Army Corps of Engineers.
Right, that's what I was saying, from what I recall, but it was just natural swale. And and the ifiness of the water department is.
The engineering.
Engineering department.
So just over time, in old Niskuna and places that used to have swales, they get filled in for because people like to have the bigger front yards and, you know, it's.
Swales really work and I've got one in my backyard.
Yeah, the world has kind of gone to actually unburying the pipes because the pipes used to be the engineering solution, everything, just like levees for flooding.
And they can break.
But now I think they try to unbury them, so.
Yeah, I would also say a lot of places that are unburying them is along unmitigated roadsides. So they're looking to slow down unmitigated pavement areas. This is just passing it through his property to allow him to use that property more efficiently for his use. We're talking about ninety feet of additional pipe to take runoff from the town park, deliver it to the wetland where it's going anyways.
I mean, I mean, for me, at least, the the engineering department and TD is gonna have to give the final.
Correct.
But but I think, but I think the, you know, the positive conveyance through the culvert, I think that's a plus. But the issue is the long-term maintainability of that culvert. Right, that's, you know, if when I reviewed this and looked at it and tried to understand it pending this discussion, for me, that was actually what the key thing is.
Because it's so long.
Right, yeah, and and just, you know, the responsibility is more like they're gonna have to be the owners, but the town in that case doesn't have any you know, doesn't have any basis to tell the owner, hey, you know, you gotta do something here.
I imagine it would be a problem with his drive, at his driveway and his front yard.
No, agreed, but remember the other issues that go along on the larger Seneca property with I I also, you know, we also don't want the owner to be the scapegoat for every bit of water problem that's there like we had encountered the last time, right? Maybe scapegoat is too harsh a word, but it's clear. Yeah.
With the with the updated plan, I think also where the culvert extension is, there were less trees that were cleared out. Is that correct? Or at least along what would be like the southern edge of the property?
With some of the. Yeah, so the originally we had shown a thirty-foot-long grassline swale to back, come back towards the bridge that crosses the path here. Instead of doing that, just to leave it as vegetated where it is today. That's that was sort of what happened when the driveway was pushed over a little bit more, so that allowed to keep some of that vegetation at the where the bridges, which is right about here.
Right. So so the runoff from River Road Park comes through a squail, swale to the culvert.
Yep, enters the culvert here. And then the the current plan enters here and exit here and then grassline swale for ninety feet. So the proposal is to have enter the pipe here and exit the pipe here.
So is there something pending from the engineering department and a TD will also have to?
So they're working on it to help the applicant with their timelines. They wanted to present the project to you guys here to get your feedback while the engineering department's working on it as well.
I'm happy with the swale, but if the engineering department is behind this, I will reconsider that.
Yeah, I mean, I I think.
Respect the recommendation, yes.
Again, I I think I said it, so I'm gonna I'll say for last time, try not to repeat, right? I think positive conveyance of a culvert is a good thing. Hopefully, engineering department sees that long-term maintainability that comfort for me is the issue. Some kind of a, you know, contract or agreement will need to get reached based on that. Right?
It could be an annual inspection by an engineering firm.
Something that the engineering department is happy with.
I I would kind of echo what Ms. Gold is saying too. I would just wonder if a hundred feet of opportunity for water to sink into the ground decreases the amount of water intake into that basin, but I can't answer that. And if it's, if the engineering, if the water department's okay with the impact, then you know, having things open, you know, dump in open, open soil earlier puts less of a burden on where it's going. That's one of the benefits of the swale in front of my house. Um, and you can see what's going on to Laura's point, but again, if the water department's okay with it, then.
I don't think they love it, but they are reviewing it. So what I'm hearing is if they.
I'm not loving it either.
Find a line of sight with the engineering that you guys will defer to those.
Yep.
But that's not the issue point of drainage on that road. It's further to the south, which is the problematic point. The, where that cul-de-sac begins, almost where Ryan's driveway is.
Southeast.
To the southeast. That, that drainage from, we'll call it the roadway, over towards where the proposed modified swale is, is minimal compared to, yeah, that's the problem there. So.
Can you back that up?
Yeah, it's where it comes from, Iroquois.
Correct.
Yeah. And it is.
Right there.
Yeah, so that was kind of my point, in that you'd have more absorption opportunity with the swell.
Not, not there.
Oh, it's coming, it's coming.
It's coming the other direction.
Yeah.
If you, if you, if you drive around and look up at where the house is placed in the driveway, it's, it's very evident what, what's there of where the grade change is. So there is, albeit a smaller swale that, that is on the roadway as well, just not as wide and a little less deep, I believe, correct?
Correct.
And the calculations that were in part of the package as well shows the same conveyance or slightly improved.
If you look at the numbers. There's no net change.
Yeah, no net change.
Okay. We're talking about the, the River Road culvert, which is the, you know, up here and we have a common culvert here, where
Yeah.
You know, four hundred CFS and I think it's three CFS coming across the, from the park. Everything's coming from Iroquois and above.
So, so again, Laura, it's the engineering department. Is there a TD involved?
Yeah, um, uh, they used to be called prime, but now they're KB Engineering. Mm-hmm.
So I think that's the key piece that we'd be looking at, right, including the maintenance thing and then we could, so we'll have to call for public hearing on amendment?
Thing, so if you guys are comfortable, the engineering department will have to complete its review. Um, they asked Mr. DeSillip for the calculation to be provided.
Which are the ones in this document, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I think money has to go to the TDE to review it, but they also needed to make sure that the planning board could look at it and would be amenable to the site plan changes, um, before they do all that. But yeah, if you guys are okay with it, they can do that. And then, um, really it'd just be an amendment to the subdivision.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the movement of the driveway.
I see that as something.
Another board member, other, other planning board members can speak. It's really to ensure that we're not making any water conveyance issues worse. Right, than the original plan, worse than the original plan. And for that, that's an engineering question.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Yeah, I think we provided enough information for the TD to review.
Yep.
Objectively.
So would the TD have that stuff by our August meeting?
Um, I, I, maybe. It's a pretty short turnaround, but we could try.
Okay. So I think that's the timeline we're, we're waiting on, right? This, this board needs to be convinced from the engineering calculations that we're not making anything worse relative to the original plan.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll wait to hear back from Doug and his team.
Mm-hmm. I think though.
Yeah, there's, the next meeting's August eleventh, so the deadline is pretty quick for that.
Yeah, I think also I could check the TDE funds, but the, I think they'll do another estimate of reviewing that documentation. I'll have to look. I'm not exactly sure where that's at, because Clark helps me with that a lot.
Yeah, and we, and we can, if there's any additional information he needs to complete his review, we can provide that information.
Okay.
So if everything's set, I just need to know what he would like to see additionally.
Yeah, we can get that to you guys.
Will the engineering review come to a conclusion on which is actually better?
I am not the expert on that. I can ask.
Yeah, to me, the less disturbance still land, the better.
Yeah.
Therefore, I think the swale is preferable.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is zoning code amendment to allow child daycare centers in an independent building as a special use permit in the R1 low-density residential zoning district. We have some updated information on the chart that was gathered by, I believe, Mr. Henry. And I believe Ms. Gomes will be the project lead for this.
So Clark updated the table, um, to show the areas where the adult daycare center in an independent building is allowed. Um, because we were talking, distinguish between a child daycare building and an independent building and an adult daycare and independent building. And all the, our, all the residential, primary residential zoning districts, um, adult daycares in an independent building are allowed with a special use permit. Um, but like we said before, in the child daycare in an independent building is not allowed. So they do overlap in the residential professional zoning district. They're both allowed as a special use permit. Um, but yeah, they're opposite in the residential zone, so that's one piece of information. And Clark, feel free to jump in here. He did also look at Bethlehem, um, because that's usually our, like, go-to town. And, um, Bethlehem does not distinguish between adult or child daycare, or, yeah, so, and they are allowed in residential zones. They have very, like, very defined, like, much more granular zoning than we have. Um, Clark, I don't know if you just wanna talk about it quickly?
You've got it though, Laura. You, this is, we're just looking at, this is right out of the town of Bethlehem's, uh, zoning code. And you can see in green, that's the daycare center and SP means site plan. So it only requires a site plan review in fourteen of their fifteen zoning districts. They have fifteen zoning districts and they allow daycare in fourteen of the fifteen. The other interesting thing is they don't make any differentiation. They have no differentiation between adult daycare and child daycare. So both, both of those are allowed in fourteen of the fifteen, um, zoning districts.
So, so in addition to Bethlehem, Laura and Clark, thank you for putting in the adult daycare. So i- if we make a problem statement that we would like, you know, that there's not enough child daycare opportunities within most of our, most of our zones, residential zones, right, as, as independent buildings, doesn't they, uh, w- 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 would just the uniformity between adult daycare and child daycare solve that for us in our code?
Yeah, I think.
It seems like it would, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Yep.
And it's really not too difficult to get behind that from a perspective of equity, right?
Yeah, and it was, it was like eye-opening to me when Clark was like.
Equity is still a good word, right?
Well, of course they don't, yeah, yeah, yeah. You have, you have something.
The thing I was gonna say is right now the code defines, it does define and separates them and allows, like, it has special provisions for one compared to the other. So if you change the definition, that wouldn't necessarily solve the problem. You'd still have to hash out which zoning districts, if there'd be any changes.
Yeah, 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 no, I wasn't coming from the, I wasn't taking it too simplistically, simplistic in the description, but it would be to have the current definition of child daycare be able to follow a format, especially where that independent building piece is concerned, like the adult daycare follows. And I, I don't think we'd wanna change the definitions of.
Yeah.
No, I would just, because then we, the, this board would still have to address this again and be a special use permit or, you know, what, what would the requirement be?
And I would recommend, although I think it's very interesting that in Bethlehem, it's not a special use permit, it's just a site plan review, but I think because our residential homes are so dear to us, we should, I would recommend we keep it as a special use permit, for sure.
Yeah, I, I would, I mean, a- as listed for the adult use, right?
Yeah, so actually, I mean, if you're looking at it, there's some discrepancy for the adult daycare use. It's not allowed in neighborhood commercial or shopping center commercial, not sure why. I think that if we're making everything equal, like anywhere where an adult daycare is allowed in an independent building, but a childcare isn't, we could add that and then.
Vice versa.
Vice versa, right? So if you're allowed to have an independent childcare facility, why wouldn't you be allowed to have an?
But I agree.
I actually don't think the child daycare and the adult daycare are the same and support continuing to treat them differently. And I don't think in buildings totally dedicated to child daycare belong in R1 or R2. I'm perfectly willing to see this go to a public hearing and see what residents have to say. They may see it differently.
Mm-hmm.
But my experience is they probably won't, but I could be wrong.
Wha- what's the main reason, Ms. Gold?
Child daycare tends to be more intrusive on the neighborhood. Because if you've got little kids and they're walking, you need them outside some of the time. That's a hallmark in running a daycare. Once they're mobile enough to do that. And then you get the noise, you get some wild things sometimes. And it, it's a whole different issue. The adult daycare, when people are in adult daycare, there are other issues that pretty much keep them close. They may go out and sit in the yard or something, but they're not running around.
Just to add some extra information to that, Ms. Gold, we did, um, on your question about was there a requirement with child daycare to have an outdoor, um, playground or something like that? And we were told that there is not. There, there is a requirement that the, the children get outside of the building. So that, that could be taken, being taken for a walk in a stroller or be, just being outside of the building, like you're saying, um, just for clarity. But they, there doesn't necessarily need to be a playground per se. They also did say that with adult daycare, the traffic impact tends to be a little bit more dispersed throughout the day because you have people coming and going at all hours of the day, basically, um, going off to medical appointments, things like that, where child daycare tends to be more of a rush at drop-off and then pickup time. So just wanted to let you know that we did follow up on a couple of questions that were raised at the last planning board meeting.
Thank you. But, and just, my personal opinion is that we're trying to make our town livable. And we need to serve early education and we need to serve aging in place and allowing people to have their parents live with them. And if they can't be left alone all day, giving them a place to bring them. And I think that the differences in traffic being dropped off and the differences in noise levels can be addressed through a special use permit.
Yeah.
Um, but I wouldn't wanna preclude the ability for a place to have such services that are required so that we can attract young families and keep old families. And we're serving all ranges in our town. So I would still recommend that we move forward with the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, no, and, and I think Leslie wasn't saying that we shouldn't do the public hearing, right? We should do it.
Yeah, she was, yeah.
Right, yeah, 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 it was, um, no, no, I mean, it's, it's, it's a point I'll take. Actually, this is a not-so-smart question. It, in our code, do we define an age limit and what child means?
Um, no, no.
The state does.
Huh?
The state.
So, yeah, and, and, right, and, and so what is that limit on the, on, from the state?
Last I knew, child could be any one under twenty-one.
Because childcare can be like, it would include after school or before school care. I also think though, um, I've worked in adult daycare, not that they usually call it that, but like program, adult program is what they usually, um, term it. Um, I did work with developmentally disabled. The traffic is similar because they do drop off in the morning and then they have full-day program, similar to that of like a child daycare. Also, it is a goal, um, for like activity, like daily activities um, and for quality of care for adults to be involved in the community that they live in as much as possible. So it is a goal to have them walk in the community, go to the libraries. So the same way you would see children being involved in communities, it's similar. Of course, age-appropriate, but it is a similar level of involvement.
My experience is limited, but I've, what I know is a lot of adult daycare is not five days a week. It may be one or two days, more of a respite sort of thing for the primary caregiver.
Yeah, respite would be, respite is considered a separate service. So like, so if someone has programming, they may, I mean, it doesn't have to be five days, it could be five days, but respite is a specific, if you are taking care of your loved one and you need a break, then you would then contract or have an agreement with the same facility to have a room, and then that would be your respite. So that would be separate, but if you have daily, weekly programming, it is a set time.
I'm talking about just day, a day daycare. Um, not where they stay overnight or anything like that, but I know programs where the person goes one or two days a week or maybe three days a week, but not all five, because the caregiver can arrange things so they only need so many days a week, not all five.
So that's true of childcare as well, right? So there's plenty of people.
Far less of it with the, uh, child daycare.
Uh, having had my child in daycare.
There's like, especially, not since COVID, but people have fifty, if you're, most people are offering fifty percent remote and if you can save your money.
Okay, that has changed. I would say that, like, at least half of the parents that I know do not have full time, but some days.
Yeah. But once, just to clarify and go back to, to what Sue said about twenty-one and under, so by making the change and allowing, you know, moving toward that ability to have an independent building, that could be anybody, that could be anything from birth to child and the distinguishing, determining the age range would be done in the special
In the licensing with the state, actually. So we wouldn't, it's kind of like restaurants, right? I mean, like, we wouldn't necessarily get into exactly
Yeah.
what license they have, what food they serve.
Yeah.
Like, we're just gonna look at how many, you know, children they have per day, like what their hours of operation are, what their staff is.
Yeah.
If they have out playground.
That's my question, Laura. So once we open it, it's just the applicants, whatever permit the applicant comes to us with or whatever license, we would not as a.
We're not, yeah, we're not gonna put an age limit in our.
Yeah, we're not gonna age it, but I mean, our recourse.
We can.
No, I don't think we can.
Yeah, I, 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 I think Ms. Gold's, the difference obviously between adults and children is clear. We all agree too that we need to do something more for childcare. Um, so I think a lot of that purview will end up happening for the special use and ultimately what the site plan details are gonna be. Including the business operating our staff, the type of building, the type of access entry points, right? I think, a- and I feel comfortable then in that case that if we made what we're looking at in the table, uniform, between adult daycare and child daycare, both vice versa. I believe any planning board in the future making that recommendation to the town board for a special use permit would probably have enough degrees of freedom to treat each situation, you know, individually.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and not set, and not set some kind of, not set some of that hard, you know, that broad precedent.
Right.
Right, am I, I don't think I'm missing something there.
No, a special use permit would require a public hearing.
Yep.
Two.
Two.
Always.
Two.
Yep. And we would have to address parking, pickup.
Yeah, right, yeah. We're not talking about taking it to just site plan.
That's right, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I mean, everything that goes in.
I mean, anecdotally, I'm not sure. It feels like the district, it feels like Niskuna has a pretty decent network of school age after-school care.
They get filled up very fast.
They fill up fast, yeah. It feels like the real challenge is the birth to three or four problem where there's.
Also true, but I can tell you I can't get five days a week after-school child, my child.
Local.
Yeah.
And then there's gonna be a school district. Like, I mean, she's only been for kindergarten, I've only dealt with one year, but I could not get four, five.
Because there was not slots for her.
There was not enough.
Yep.
Yeah, they're full.
It was filled up.
You can be on waiting lists for years and then by the time it opens up, your kid is too old.
Yeah.
And you've been juggling your lives for a.
Yeah, I mean, so, you, you know, for me personally, you can tell from my words, I'm a big proponent of that equity, uniformity, everything else, but the, the, one of this extreme scenarios playing through in my head is, you know, kids are us based in Wichita, Kansas, with their big, you know, divisions of, you know, a thousand childcare centers all across, right? Decides that they wanna come and put one next door to my house.
Right, that would be a special use permit.
Right, and so it's really just thinking through. Right. And so it's really just thinking through, okay, well, you know.
Is that an appropriate use? And then you have that extra level of review with special use.
Right. And also, I mean, I don't know, is there some criteria about ownership and, right? You know, in terms of the nature of that daycare, the own, right?
Well, that's the advantage of a special use permit, because it's not, it's not, I mean, it's. As long as it meets all the requirements, it can go forward. But if it isn't in harmony with that particular character of the community spot there, um, you know.
And so I think the concept of a community daycare, that kind of thing, because again, you know, twenty years from now, you'll have. Kids are us based wherever they're based with their robot staff of, you know, gentle, comfortable, fun looking robots taking care of kids. And they'll want to be right next to my house. I'm not being ridiculous about it. This is happening, this is happening in the world today.
No, I think in that case. You, there isn't really any land like that left in the residential zone. So you'd be talking about removing single family homes.
Yeah.
And I mean, you guys have already seen, the town board is more than willing to deny special use permits with single family homes. To come down for, you know, a more intense use. So that's where you just gotta, you know. That's where you gotta let your planning, trust your planning process. Like, the code is there, you know, um. To allow for applications to come in, but your planning process is the place where you figure out what's appropriate. Like, a Toys R Us is probably not, I mean, Kids R Us.
Kids R Us.
Probably not. Right. I mean, that might work very good in a neighborhood commercial zone, but it's probably not gonna work good in a residential zone.
Again, I, I mean, I'm thinking through because I, I do think a special use permit process can give us, you know. Proactive regulation, if I want to use that word, of, of most, if not all, of these potential contingencies.
Who would be eligible for the special use permit? Because the state does allow for individuals to have daycares in their homes.
Yeah, those are exempt from our zoning code. They exist now. Yeah, those are considered, basically they're treated as single family homes, even though they have.
So someone mentioned this and I'm smiling because it goes back to the earlier discussion with the, uh, with the place of worship.
Yeah.
So as long as an owner agrees, it could be in anyone.
Well, no, so there's actually a specific license, there's two from the.
Right, I mean, once they're licensed.
Group daycare and family daycare are allowed in single family homes without zoning review at all. They never come to the planning board. This would be for beyond that five kids that live in their houses. Yeah, because those. It's kind of like the state also regulates, um, like care homes that have like five, uh, you know, handicapped people. Or, um, neurodiverse.
Group homes?
Yes.
Add-in law?
Yeah, no, so they are just considered a single family home. They never come to us, they're not.
Pretty much function as single family homes.
Yeah, well, so do the, um, family daycares, so.
But there's nothing.
Yes and no.
This is just to clarify, this is, there's no expectation that the homeowner is going to be the operator.
So you're looking at a special use permit, and I mean, I, I know that some crystal ball work is good when you're talking about zoning code. But, um, it would be a spe- it would be a special use. So you would look at the ownership situation. I think typically when it's just a single family home that's taking on children, it's likely just gonna get licensed to the state. You guys are not gonna see that. It's not a childcare in an independent building. It's, that's a special use permit for a shared childcare inside of a single family home. It's not what we're talking about.
Yeah.
But there is the potential to lose single family homes.
Yeah.
That exists now, though.
But that exists today, yeah. It exists today.
So right now you could, uh, lose single family homes for an adult daycare application.
Right.
So I just.
No difference.
Yeah.
And Laura, I know we're at a very high percentage of build out for residential. I mean, what is, I'm all for creating more childcare, the need is definitely there. Um, what is the potential in the town of space that could potentially be used for that? Are you thinking about in terms of repurposing existing commercial space or construction?
There's not a lot of commercial space in the residential zone, so you're not gonna, I don't think you're gonna see a lot of repurposing of, you know. One of the spots we've talked about, there's some interest in the two lots at Kelts Farm that are along River Road.
Which can make great homes.
And, you know, there may be an occasion in a subdivision like that, um, the, it's actually zoned RP, I think. But the corner of Riley Road and, you know, there's, there's probably a number of parcels there. I, I mean, I'm just being honest with you guys. I don't think there's gonna be a huge demand to try and come in and take down single family homes. A neighborhood and build a giant childcare building, that's just not gonna happen. And if we do get a random application like that, I think it'll be pretty easy to deny. I mean, we're talking about. Areas where we might be able to fit an independent.
Yeah. I, I mean, for me, the opposite end of the spectrum from kids in Wichita, Kansas, daycare people. Is actually someone comes in for development or maybe an existing development in retrospect, right? And we make a recommendation that, you know, hey, you know, you're allowed a child daycare. That'll serve, that'll serve your development, that'll serve your community, the extended community, whatever else it is. So maybe one of those residential lots where you're gonna put up a home or some average BNC development or whatever it is. You know, you have the ability now to consider that actually there can be a flourishing, right? You know, we could have done it at Rivers ledge, we could have done it, so many, but we just, that was the past, right? But now this gives us an opportunity for the future in that more benign, community-serving kind of way.
Correct. Yeah.
Right?
Because we do sometimes approve subdivisions that have a really challenging lot for a single family home.
Yeah, exactly. And that could be a perfect.
They sneak through and then, you know, and then we're retrofitting the lot for a single family home where it may be just totally fine to have a.
Just to touch on the need again too, like, Sarah, to go back to your question, I mean, there's definitely after school issues, I think Laura and I can both. attest to, but from personal experience, when my daughter was like two to three. I lost my stay-at-home mom that I had that was taking care of her and I was without childcare for four months before I found.
Yeah.
Anybody that could take her. So that young age, the younger ages too, is definitely.
It's cute. I mean, and just the idea of how far you have to drive to take them before you even.
I can't remember, but I know this came up either with Erin or Janet, somebody went to a training. And it's, they were told that like Niskuna specifically is one of the.
It is a desert.
Yeah, maybe Laura, you spoke on that already, I don't know, but there's definitely, definitely a need.
Yeah.
Yeah, with the lady that trains on daycare says that we're a daycare desert. Yeah.
Okay, so bottom line is we'll, we'll propose uniformity. And.
So we'll come back with the actual code update, I think, for you guys next time. And then if you like the way it's written, you.
Good. I gotta go patent my Kids R Us and which that has as a robot daycare people idea. Shoot.
All right, that's it for open discussion items. Uh, moving on to reports.
I am, well. You may have noticed that Rivers ledge put up a sign at their entrance. Yes, which hasn't come to you guys, so they are under enforcement, but I guess that's the only report I have.
And these are temporary signs, right?
Oh, no.
No, they're permanent. They look very nice.
They look very nice. Um, yeah, the building inspector's been out there gathering, um, people to talk to and. Yes, there's some enforcement happening there.
So we've already communicated with them, right?
Yeah, they are under enforcement to come here, so you should be seeing Rivers ledge signs.
Okay, time after second, Laura. As part of enforcement, do you have the ability to just tell them, tear it down and, and get approved? Or are we gonna be, are we gonna be forced into having to?
So in an enforcement, I guess we don't typically tell them to tear it down, um, unless they go through the boards and the board say no. Um, but we give very clear direction to the planning board and the zoning board, whoever is in, you know, the ultimate authority.
Yeah.
That the construction should not weigh in that it's, it's already built. Um, should not weigh in the determination of what should be there.
I mean, so I drove by there recently and I missed it, but I did fill in something on the dot, I was.
Yeah, they're, they're large blade signs that are probably one and a half to two wide by eight to ten tall. And they're right at the two entrances and it looks, it looks, it looks, it looks nice. I don't know what the square footage requirements would be, you know.
They're unusual signs. I can't think of any other place that we have a sign like that.
No, I can't either.
But, uh, they went up without permission and they do need to come here.
Yeah, so, so that's why I'm asking. I mean, we've had a long history, couple of years, and working very closely with this applicant, this developer, what would?
I don't know. It's so.
Has something changed? Is?
Project manager has changed.
Oh, they have.
Chuck's no longer there. Ah, okay. Okay, that's, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, I would think, my guess is it was a.
Yeah, so if you drive by and you're like, whoa, what is that? We are working on it.
What is the deterrent? Because I feel like it's happened a couple of times. And if it's just like, oh, we'll, we'll, we'll put the sign up and take the tap on the hand, you know.
I mean, well, it's never, well, we are working on a fine for issuing a stop work order. Um, we're working on that with the town board. Um, but like I said, just because it's up does not mean you have to approve it. So, yeah, there's. There, if they do that, I mean, at some point, maybe we'll be able to find them, but the, you know, it's, if you guys don't like it, you can just.
Yeah.
Then, then we do enforce it to take down, but we don't typically make them take it down, um, without at least coming to a board and running it past the board.
But these are, these are condominiums or townhouses, these are apartments.
Yeah, they're apartments.
Certainly do need signage, you know.
It is, yeah, you, we'll get the package hopefully shortly. I think, uh, Kevin's been dropping by there, so.
We didn't, they didn't have signage in the original. There were never, I don't remember any draft signs for that.
So it was confusing to me because I think they, they had sort of a now leasing sign that had like a picture of a building, kind of like themed like.
I mean, that's why I asked the question, because I would have anticipated, I mean, expected it to be a ten percent. But we would have had a condition that said that sign, signage has to come back to us at some point, right?
I mean, I don't, you would think it was anticipated, because they don't have to have signage at the front.
And I think that's what we all kind of thought that it wasn't going to be. I don't ever remember asking, it would be a sign added.
I mean, the building looked great.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does look great, you know.
The new building, yeah.
One time they had some temporary signage up, but that did go away.
That's what I mean. Temporary signage kind of looked like maybe it was gonna be the permanent signage, but then all of a sudden, these giant signs appeared. So anyway.
Over the years, I can remember the ZBA denying variances and. Sections of fence being removed. There was a very prominent fence on the southern part of Volchalla that. Came down in height because the ZBA would not approve the six foot in the front yard.
Oh, yeah, the ZBA makes people take down things that are installed fairly regularly.
Believe there was a swimming pool that was removed many, many years ago.
Okay.
So, yeah, there can be some nasty consequences.
Okay, um, moving on to commission business, anybody have anything?
Just one brief thing, and I talked about this with Laura. So, so I did see the last ZBA meeting. Um, I had personal reasons to watch it. Um, it became clear to me as a planning member in the town, it might be good for one of our continuing education trainings. To actually be for both us and the ZBA and whoever else is interested at the different committees, to actually get a review of our code. So that we understand some of the, because I know I've attended a lot of them where it's talked about at the state level and, you know, the legal requirements and use area, et cetera. But I think actually specifically to our code, what our districts are, here's the map. Maybe a little bit about here's the comp plan. I can see us easily getting eight hours worth of credit out of that. Kind of discussion, because it was, I, I was a little taken aback by what I saw. That's as far as I'm gonna go on public record. Um, and I think for me, looking at solutions, I think, you know, to ensure a continued familiarity with the said code of our town. Is incumbent upon each and every one of us that serves the town.
It actually would be a good on-ramp.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good, yeah. Yeah, we could even record it so that when we were onboarding people, they could watch it. Yeah. I will definitely look into that.
It's also, yeah, on-ramp, but some of us deal with other counties a lot and you can easily not recall. You can always look it up, but it, it's kind of, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Okay. A couple of things from my end. The Ingersoll Pavilion was constructed and dedicated.
And it's paper.
Was in paper too, so. One of our projects.
That's right.
True. Um, and then the other thing I just wanted to touch base on was the Seneca Road project. So, uh, myself, Laura, Matt and Cameron met with, uh, Mr. Lucy and Mr. DeSault to talk about. Basically what the project was and what the modifications were. So what we, I think we should do as a board is when we have a site plan that starts to get modified. We have language in there that says if there's site modifications per the TDE's review, we delegate a lot of that back to planning. And to the engineering department. Uh, when we start to see several modifications on a site plan. We should let the applicant know that, okay, this is your approved site plan. If there are modifications, it may be subject to coming back to us for. You know, for an amendment. That is, we were trying to define that threshold, we were talking after the meeting. And I think this is a very good candidate to earmark this project, to understand, we did that with Pulsinelli. With the drainage that was there, there was a new owner that came in, they wanted to change things. Immediately the town told them, you have to come back to planning. So.
Limits of clearing, I always say.
Clearing, there's things like that. So, I think what we're gonna do in our long-term. Process of becoming, you know, more thorough and things that we're doing. Is to maybe have a caveat in there as a condition that talks about site plan amendments.
Yeah.
That would go in just to say if there is a modification, you know, moving a rain garden from one location to another or, you know, tweaking something. But when you have more than three modifications to the site, that may be the threshold that we might start to see applications.
So, so I agree with you, Chairman Diopino. Thank you, you know, you and the town team and the planning department, water engineering for doing that. I'm actually probably a little more stringent because it came out today, right? I think this applicant has an intended use to be able to maximize the usage of that area. So the movement of the rain garden was a piece of that, the culvert now becomes, right? So maybe it's not three, maybe it's quote unquote, a major enough modification and if it's a single thing.
Right.
Be- because at least we, we have a responsibility at least, and I'm, you know, I know the engineering department absolutely does, the planning department does. So looking at us as a team, we do have the responsibility to ask some of these systems of systems questions. Right? At the end of the day, it came up for me when I was looking over, I'm like, geez, why did you move the rain garden? Right? And so just like we don't like, you know, incremental subdivisions, right? By the same token, I think we want to preclude ourselves against having incremental site plan amendments. And then we're comfortably faced with a limited set of options to the planning board when something does have to come back. So I would say we need to come up with something that says, if this one item is significant enough of an amendment, of a deviation from an approved site plan. Even if it's one item, it's gotta come back to the board. We, we have a responsibility to be speedy, right? So we really shouldn't be tying an applicant up over some large number of meetings. But by the same token, it doesn't mean that we at least take one meeting and have to look at it.
Well, and they can keep their timeline if they just build what was approved by planning, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it seems to me, sorry, just on this one, it seems to me, and I, you know, I haven't talked to Mr. Lucy, right? We just, but you guys did. It seems to me there's strictly a use-based aspect that led to these changes.
Yeah.
Which is fine.
Bigger front yard.
Which is fine. But we at least want to be able to know that, eyes wide open.
Bigger, dry front yard.
Yeah, yeah, bigger grass.
Like, right, as time went on and, and the plan evolved, they actually saw the impact of water in real time and it's being adjusted.
Well, it has for decades. I can tell by the waterfall that visit.
But we want those modifications to come if they're mutually beneficial. So this is their build expense, right? If that swale filled in twenty years from now and it really needed a pipe. What would pay for it then? You know, so there's a, there is a mutual, I just want to make sure engineering's good with it. But mutual benefit is the developers actually putting this additional ninety feet in. When we all know that the swale in front of our house is a lot smaller now than it was when it was first.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know.
It may last the benefit of time better.
Yeah. Yeah, no, no, I mean, I was looking at it generally, right, to, to, to Chairman Diopino's point, I think. I think if even if one amendment gets made, somehow we gotta make a judgment call from engineering and the planning department. This is significant enough.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can try and make a matrix, I mean.
Yeah.
Our.
Well, yeah, it's.
Our interpretation on the rain garden was, well, that's one, and that's not significant enough, but then there was another, you know.
I, I think part of it was, so the TDE was continually involved in the process. And each of, I'll believe there were three revisions that were formally resubmitted. All of the engineering backed it up so that it said, we're not exacerbating or increasing anything that we had originally. So from there, I think there's an issue with the way the town looks at the road construction and the swale and what their preference is. and where the TDE kind of leaves off and says, yeah, the calks of what you're proposing for the revision look good, but the TDE doesn't make the decision, ultimately, they're just an asset that we have that we use to process some of that information. So between the site clearing, and if you go and look and you stand on the road and look up at the property, it does, the way he's carved that out of what he's cleared, does run straight up if you were to envision that large swale that would start to the right of the driveway and then a pond on, which is a sloped area, which wouldn't have to be burned up, almost like what Balltown Road has where the district headquarters are. They've created that berm around it, so you'd have to have this layered tiered effect, which is what he originally had. After the clearing, it made sense to put that detention basin off to the south. And you can see as it slopes straight up. The, the bigger issue for me is that the, you know, the swale that comes down, that's not the crux of the engineering that's on that road. And if that pipe was to go and be extended to the one hundred and forty-two feet and it does convey and do everything, ultimately, the town at some point will probably undertake a, you know, road repair project where then the, all that other water that comes down, that hits that edge of the cul-de-sac and works its way across the road, is going to be discharged and conveyed better than what it is currently. Now, given the fact of how much water we had about a month and a half ago, and how much was there, there's quite a bit of documentation that they were able to do this year with visual, you know.
Yeah, no, they, it, it became obvious that they saw a very wet front yard.
Jengus, I mean, I, I tend to agree with you about being more stringent in this case, only because of the reality of the community. We don't have big, open spaces to develop perfectly that are suitable for use. We are shoehorning most of the time and really happen to make a lot of adjustments to do anything.
Yeah, we're pretty strict, but we can come up with like, um,
Yeah.
Well, one, be stricter, but also come up with like a matrix or something that you guys.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
At, at least the discussion in the planning board where any current or future.
Simple too, I mean, if it's stormwater, maybe it has to come back to planning board. If it's a driveway realignment, nobody cares.
Right.
Something like.
Yeah, for whatever's worth on this property with all of the.
Oh, yes.
Process on, anything that I think had the word water in it, probably should have just come back those from the beginning.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, and it's, you know, the applicant also did deed over quite a bit of the wetlands over there, so.
Which, which.
You know, it's, it's a bit of, a bit of a mixed bag on, on what's there, so.
Okay.
Hopefully we can, you know, talk to future applicants so that we give them a little bit of alert as to what.
Yeah, it's really good to enforce because for some reason, even though we go through six, seven months of planning, when it goes to the fieldwork, it's very hard to get them to stick to the plan. So reinforcing it here, I think will maybe hopefully help.
And I assume whatever language we come up with will be reviewed by our attorney?
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
It has to be very clear. Because otherwise I would think we would probably need to look at all of them.
Right, great. Anything else? Okay, motion to adjourn? Let's see, we have a motion by Mr. Laflon, second by Ms. Gold, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-five PM, thank you.
Thanks.